Okay Kitty, we're rolling.
One pretty much there, and one pretty much there.
Like where the white truck is?
Yeah, on this side, yeah. That's the, uh, there's two units there and four units here.
Right, I remember that.
That's pretty much it. So we're pretty much on the driveway. We're gonna come down, pretty much basic driveway, right through here. We'll go this way a little bit, because those garages will be in the front, and these garages will be underneath.
Underneath?
Yep. So, still from the front, from the road, all you see is the first floor and roof line. Except, less than what's probably here. So...
How far back do you go?
See the stone way, way down there? Down in the corner?
Oh, only back there?
Uh-huh.
Oh, okay.
You can see the stone wall down, down there.
Yeah, I do.
That's the property line, and right along this tree line here.
Okay.
And I was, and it's...
Yeah.
Part of his driveway is on this property, you know, just a fraction of the block.
Yeah.
It's actually like, his van is probably, his wheels are probably on this side. On my side. Which I don't really care.
How many acres is this, Jeff?
Eight or a half, eight or two? I don't remember.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
You'd have to look, it says it right on the front page.
Yeah, I know, that's why I...
I don't, I don't remember.
I, I do have copies of the site plans, the, the most recent revised ones, for your guys' benefit, okay?
You got one?
I have two.
Explain it to Kitty.
Thank you.
First time I have my glasses on.
Take them off! Mine are in the car. Oh, here's, yeah. It should be right...
Is there one that shows everything the way it is now?
Yeah, right here.
Oh, that one?
Right there. So we're standing right here.
And that's the road.
No, no, the road's here.
Oh, the road's here, okay.
Yeah, we're standing here, we're behind the house. This is the house behind us.
Right, right.
Okay? Yeah. Well, it's pretty much, but see how big it is? So we're only utilizing this and this, and you'll see this on the left.
Says on the top right corner of the survey, 1.2 acres.
Uh, it's, it's somewhere. What is that, 1.2?
1.2 acres, it says it right here.
Yeah, I'll tell you if I'm sorry.
You know how much property I own? So, again, we're standing right about here.
Yeah, so I can...
Roughly. That was the driveway. So it's usually the same thing. So it should, this tree, right here, is probably somewhere right about here. That might even be, yeah, right around here. So we're not really going much farther past the tree. All that's staying open. That's all gonna be lawn and...
Okay.
Woods and whatever.
And where this, the septic is down here?
No, so the septic, we're probably using it.
Yeah.
There you go.
Why don't you guys gather rounds, so we can all look at the same plan, okay?
There it is. Put my engineering hat on. So we're approximately right about here. Okay? Somewhere right about this area. That tree's right there. The septics are over here. So it's basically one coming across, and the other one coming across. When we did the deep holes, which we did a bunch of them, they were, just it all from, you know, because we knew what we're gonna do up here and septic down there. Down there the soils were worse, up here the soils were better. So, one of the things that came up is this area right here.
Yeah, that.
Okay? That area is where all those big trees are right there. There was a swimming pool there. That's what it was. Because I took, I have my own dumpster truck. We took... Three loads of garbage. Not organic. Garbage.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Off of the site.
People find it.
Okay? So when the neighbors would get all, get all, "Oh..." You know? They weren't worried about the garbage that was here. I'm the one who picked it up. And the amount of vines that were here? Just look at this tree, yeah. Everything, you couldn't see, but where we're standing here, the base of that tree. So what we did, and we didn't take, I mean, that's the wood from what we, most of the stuff's still here. And it was all just small things that we could, basically, open it up and see what the hell we had. So what's gonna go in the future, is all the trees up here, I'm gonna talk to the neighbor about the big vine trees, because they ain't doing much, right? Obviously, you can see some of them are dead, so we've got poison ivy, because you know that's what's growing up those trees.
That's what that one I know I have.
You know, but like, the, the small maples over here, they're gonna stay?
The Japanese maple is staying.
Yeah, the Ja-, well, that's on his, that's actually on the line. But things like, yeah, but things like this elm tree right here, those are gone. We're leaning out there, they're danger.
Right.
And it, the one behind it is a choke cherry, that's dead. You can't even tell, because it's vine. Those two are gone, and this is going. But unless something's in the way of the septics, which it probably isn't, they're staying. I don't, I don't, not cutting anymore down. The whole idea is to keep the site relatively wooded, you know? More or less, kinda low, more low impact, you know, we're not coming in and clearcutting stuff, you know, just, you know, most of this is garbage, it's not...
You see, that, that's the hard part. It's what, it's what, it's what is garbage.
Yeah, most of it.
Because that will wind up...
Unfortunately, most of it, because the, the property was neglected for so long.
This tall tree.
So there's... So there's one system, what you guys asked about the septics, is, um... One system is basically above that thing, and the other one's below that. And...
Before the pool and after the pool?
Yeah, where the, where the old pool, I'm gonna call it the pool area, right? And what we're gonna do, obviously, we're gonna cut those trees down, take out the organics, and replace that with select fill. And basically, that ends up making the septic system technically bigger. And then the, uh, retention area that Steve has on here, is in that far corner, way down there, where there's already nothing there. So that's where that's going. So it's not like even trees are getting cut down for that to happen. So that's, and that's all the way down in that corner where you see the rubble, you know, the rock, rocks. Actually, that's stone wall.
Where that white tree is there?
No, no, no.
No, probably down, probably, where the other one is, okay.
Yeah, way down there. Past that tree that's laying on the ground.
Okay.
And that's proper line, that's fine.
This is all staked out. You have to stake it out to have this done. So if you look at it right here... Here's the encroachments. So you can see these are, some, one of the, uh, neighbors asked about the arbor light. See those arbor lights, they're about this tall, those little ones?
Yeah.
Look where they are.
Yeah, I see them.
Look where my property line is.
Yeah. Yeah, it's there, everybody's...
That's another, that's theirs, yeah. So I'm another, this is a scale of one and twenty, it's about an inch, so I'm another ten feet on the other side of that.
Yeah, I remembered when you said that, you had...
Yeah.
I went down there and tried way first.
It doesn't bother me, I'm not cutting it down. You know what, I don't care. But as long as it, and it shouldn't, because if you look at those, I don't know if they can transfer over to other... Yeah. See right here? They're not gonna be in my way. Buildings are going here, and here.
But that's the path for the, uh...
That's a dumpster path. Yep. This is the most recent, David?
Yes.
Steve sent the other day. Yeah, he had to move a couple of things around for a few of the responses from SLR and Health. Um, but you, you can talk to Steve about that. And quite frankly, as I said at the meeting the last time you all heard me, if there was city sewer here, there'd be more than six apartments going in.
Oh, wow, whoa, crap, crap.
That's just, you know...
Now the pool, is that, is that, if you're...
Well, you, I'm...
Is that empty?
Yeah, there's real pool, it was an above-ground pool that was sucking down in the ground.
Oh, it was above ground, alright, that's all you need to do.
Well, it was either above or below. What I think it was, in the back end, when they used to put in-ground pools in, they weren't like when you do them now. It was like a steel ban, and then they dug it out, and so it was...
Oh, my neighbor had one of those. Mine is, mine is, mine is twelve inches of concrete all the way around.
That's an old style build, that's the way they did them back then. But it was, I mean, you could get, the trees were growing, I mean, you could see the size of the trees. One of them you get those, that's probably, yeah, yeah, that looks like an ashtray, the metal one. So, yeah, so that's it.
But there's no structure in a way where that thing was.
No, no, no. We're just taking out the organics, whatever's, however Steve has us doing it, and the biggest thing was taking out the organics. I know that he's been talking with Matt Pollak, that's in the state of Connecticut, Department of Health. He basically su- oversees all the directors of Health. But that's as far as I'm going, it's not, he, he can explain it to you.
I will.
You know, I wanna know what my thoughts are on some of the things that happened. We'll be good at that.
Yeah.
Um, Steve, you know, that's, that's my engineer's job, is to educate the commission on what is needed, or, or not, not what is needed, what is, um, what is allowed. He has to show suitability, that's all he has to do. Um, he doesn't have, even though these, the systems are designed, he doesn't have to prove that the design works to you, to the commission. He just has to prove suitability.
No, if you're, if you're Health department, right.
And the Health, and if he doesn't agree with the town, he can, he can deal with the state. So, that's his job, that's why I hire, you know, he's an expert.
Absolutely.
Since the commission's here, why don't we go down and just take a look at the whole property?
Can this, this is, gonna stay the same elevation like you know?
I gotta kick you in the shot.
There's the cut and fill, you know, it's very minimal.
Remember Kitty, I'm, I'm video recording, so if you're not comfortable...
I know, I see it. But if I can, I'd rather go down.
Okay.
If I can.
The whole idea is not to make it look like a parking lot, right? We don't want it to look, you know, because this is a little bit more residential than, you know, that there's houses, or anything else. So I take that into consideration, you know? And if I, if I was gonna do it bigger, it would've been designed, this is gonna work into the neighborhood. All the houses aren't big, they're all small. So when you're only looking at one level plus the roof line, and I, I don't know if you got, no, you guys all should've seen the, uh, the elevations from the architect. The building's gonna be nice, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna, we're gonna have some stone on the front of it, dogs in it. It's gonna look nice. This is going in a dumpster.
Right, with the distance on the road.
It's probably about the same, you know, because the idea is, you're gonna pull in here, you're pulling to your garage, you walk up the stairs in your garage. Or you can park in a parking spot, and walk around every sidewalk, and walk in the sun porch.
Because you'll have, you'll have, you'll have the garage, and then a park, and park in front of it.
You know how many times in my life I've been, I've lived in my house for almost four years now, how many times I've walked through my front door?
I don't ever open my front door.
No.
You either come up, I have a back door to my porch...
Driving to your garage.
Or you go in the garage.
Well, I don't, I don't, I drive a truck, so I was parked in the back, and I, I parked in the back of my car for days.
Okay.
So, yeah, let's walk down.
What's your plan Kitty?
I gotta give it a shot.
Yeah?
Go down that way?
Yeah, you sure?
Yeah, no, you're gonna see it. I'm good. I'm good, I think.
I'm following your lead.
And if I'm not, I will stop cold, and not go in. Oh, yeah. I do need you to kick me out off the ground. I'm holding you to it.
Thank you Eric. Here, you got it?
Yep. And, um... Then I'll, I'll roll you down. Come on, guys. There we go. Okay, I can't, well, well, because they, well, no, they said it was supposed to be cooler. Look, some of it. And some of it, so you don't see it. Well, it was a boulder, a weird one. And then they changed it. Yeah, I know, it's why my boots stand. I wear my boots. I see them all. A short, no, a long. Ah, oh, there it is. Ah, CJ.
So basically, we're standing on the first septic system roughly, right here.
Uh-huh.
So...
And this is the one that had the better soil?
No, no, the better soil was on this side of the property, when you get way down there, was, you get what's, when, when you have to install septics, it goes to what's modeling, right? And your soil's good until you hit modeling. And that's where the, that's, modeling is the high water mark.
Right. And where, um, fall down, you have to go to set water?
Uh, it, it doesn't make a difference, but we hit it at, I think we had, we hit it at...
But you have water here, don't you? Don't you have town water?
Yeah. We hit it at twenty-three, no, this is ground water. I think it was twenty-three inches if I'm right, and for a septic, you only have to be at eighteen. So we still have time. So I know there's some issues with the engineer and the Department of Health, but...
So, so when, when you dig out the foundation, you're gonna...
Up there?
Yeah, you're gonna put that in here?
No, no. So you don't, you don't mess with the, the existing, where the septic's gonna go? You have, underneath us is, you know, we'll just say four to six inches of topsoil, then you have what's called your receiving soils. That's what we seed your outdoor, right? And that's how, so with septics, half of it goes through evaporation, half of it goes to percolate.
Well, I think what she wanted to ask us, will you be removed when you dig?
No, somebody just asked me that, but the cut and fill is, is very, very minimal. It's on one of the plans, uh, David might have read it, I, I remember reading it, but I don't remember what it was, the cut and fill.
Oh, the, those, Steve, I believe...
The dirt that's pulled out is reused to, regrade to make the new flatter spot for the new house. None of that gets pushed back down here. Normally, if there is excess, that type of dirt gets pulled off the septic. But there won't be, it's, it's a pretty much, it's almost a net even, either way. So like up there, once the house is done, you scrape the topsoil, that goes in piles, like your foundations. Your foundations getting stalled, yeah. Watch out.
Got a hole over there.
Oh, you know what that is?
That was a perch test.
That was a perch test hole, probably.
Oh, no, here I go.
Yeah?
So what do you do with this one?
So what, that, what, these trees will come out around that, the organics will come out, you can see part, you can see part.
Yeah, I can see it. Can you go forward? I follow you.
So what we do is, because it's a drainage system, and this is a low spot, this was dug out when they put the pool in. My guess, it looks like it was like shallow in, or a big hole. So you, once you take out your receiving soils, what are you, you're in hardpan? Well, hardpan does a percolate, you don't get infiltration through hardpan.
Right.
So that's why the water's sitting. Most people don't understand that. I do drainage for a living. This is, this is, I mean, it's a simple reason, so what we gotta do is take out the organics, right? Which won't be a lot, probably be six or eight inches, and replace this with the same select fill that we do with the septic system. So we have to bring in select fill for the septic, okay?
Mm-hmm.
And that's what is in.
You see all these trees on?
Couple of them. Only what I have, yeah.
Yeah, because they're...
So, no, no, well, we do that too, so it's not a big deal. I'm thinking now, the whole idea is to keep this wooded down here, like this won't even be lawn, this'll be natural, right? You don't have to have lawn over a septic system. You don't want trees on your septic, but you don't have to have lawn, you can have that. We, natural.
We're in two behind our own.
Gotta mow it all.
How you doing Kitty?
And then the other one will be right here, just below. So these systems are, because they're a multi-family house, Steve will probably address this to you. Yeah, one's there. I'm sorry, what's your name again?
I'm Diane.
Diane. One's above this, and one's below.
So we're, we're right up there, and then the other one's right.
You gotta remember, it goes, it goes with the trees.
Right.
Those are second, that's where the, that's where.
Now you go, I watch.
Exactly.
Okay. If you have any questions about where we are Kitty, just give us a buzz, okay?
He was gonna show where the septic is.
Okay.
Remember my septic, my, my backyard?
What's your question?
I have, because it was an egg.
Oh, I have no idea where it is.
I'm sorry, what was your question Diane?
My question was, where's 123 Milwaukee, is that it?
123 is, I believe, the property right behind us, yes. Yes, with, uh, well, I don't know, I don't think that's the house. Um... And then right behind us, the White House, I believe, is 121. And the property line is the stone wall, that you see here, uh, off in the distance aways.
That's another park hole right there.
That was done in August, or recently?
I don't remember when it was.
No, that's right.
Dug out recently.
Okay. They were wanting them here.
Well, I don't know, I, I don't know when it was, I just tell you when the dirt that's out of it. You deal with the engineers, in all reality. I mean, that's the person who's designing it. I'm an installer, licensed by the state of Connecticut, Department of Health, that's what I do. I do it all. Do you install something? Pretty much, I mean, my, it's somewhere in there. There's a reason why. Leave it outside again.
Is there, um, is there still some, uh, of the pool line on there?
You just walked over it.
Right, right, I know that, but I mean, is there some in there?
Oh, I have, I'll tell you what. You're more than free to welcome to stick your hands in there and find out. How's that?
Probably got mosquito armor on there.
But to the point, it fills it up, the low spot, it's gonna fill up with all the leaven crap, and that just becomes organic, it doesn't percolate. Yeah, well, what happens is you have a little bit of organics over time, right? You dig a hole, okay? You dig a hole down past your receiving soil, and you're gonna hit hardpan or clay. That's, they're our soils. That does not percolate.
Right.
Okay? That's where it starts running horizontal with the grain. So once it sits there, it's, there's nowhere for it to go, can't get, it doesn't percolate down. Once that's happened, you took this out of here, and you put select fill, and there you go, now it's gonna, it's gonna go with the soil. So there's an old piece of the pool right there. Like I said, we, I sat here with a machine, with a small machine, pulling shit out of here, putting them in a dumpster, literally, three dumpsters, so...
Okay. You alright Mike? Okay. Kitty, you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
There should be a stake in that corner.
Yeah.
There's the ribbons here, but...
What does it say?
Doesn't, doesn't have anything on it. I don't know if they were marking the stake that was in there.
Oh, is, is it loose, or is it tied to something?
It was tied to a stick.
Okay.
But it was just sitting there.
Okay.
Well, this is approximately, if you look at the site plan, this is approximately where the property line is. So this is where the drainage system goes, like pretty much down in this corner.
Well, why don't we go back to ask him that?
You wanna just call him?
No, we should go back to where Kitty and Eric are. Go this way. Oh, sorry, I couldn't get that for you.
Okay, it's fine.
He's like ninety-seven. He's still living at home.
What was his wife's name?
Oh, man. But she died like, uh, eight, ten years ago.
She caught, she was calling me. I mean, uh, the, the, uh, Frank.
Oh, yeah.
As she goes, Kitty, we're coming to pump you out. And I go, okay.
I've known, I knew Frank from heaven, everything, I was, I was this guy.
What's up Mike?
I was giving Kitty a visual before that drainage was, yeah?
Was drainage right there?
Right around there. Well, yeah, yeah, well, the soils aren't as good as up there, and the way Steve had, you know, is, he puts it where he wants. Like Kitty asked, why don't you leave it up? One, you have to be X amount of feet away from the pudding drains. Even though we only have pudding drains on the front of the house, it's not gonna be an issue, but there's no need to set so far that we get too much soil over here. Soon as you, soon as you do deep holes, you gotta dig down X amount, right? And then you're measuring your receiving soils, your water, your ledge, if you have ledge, all that kind of stuff. So then, then, yeah, after that, and we do this with, with the Department of Health. So Ryan is out there, so I'm me, I'm Steve, Frank is, and Ryan, Agden, Agden.
Boggan.
And, so, all three of us were here doing the exact same thing. So, you know, those two log it, I dig it, you fill it back in. So... That's what I do. And then, you know, and they monitor the, the park tests, that you gotta take measurements every ten minutes, or for an hour. And then I can do, I, I can do it, but new construction in St. Louis has to be done by, 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 well, by, by an engineer, to be precise. Which is fine, takes the liability off the installer anyways. The engineers are, uh, they're on the hook for, I think, seven years. If something goes wrong with it. So they wanna make sure it's getting done, right? They want to say have the liability. Hence, we'll see what happens. So, yeah, so I don't think, I don't think this will show the need for that. Get a little piece of the garage. Do ya?
Yeah.
There it is. Alright, so you see where the garage is, right?
Yep.
So, yeah, so let's just walk up, let's go up this way, and then we'll show you where the end of the last...
Come on, shoulder.
Good job Kitty, thank you Eric. Here, I got it behind you. Yep.
So, this will be lifted up, that'll be brought down. That's what the surveyors, they, they give me benchmarks, and that's what we work on. But the, the general, all of this, all stays the same.
Yeah.
It's not, it's just, this is actually a very, very exciting project. Think some of the other ones are good. Did anybody take a ride to Good Hill?
I, I, I don't know that place.
You should.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Came out nice, didn't it?
Yes, it did. From, from where we started, to where it wound up, the first time I went in to see it for real, I went, holy dough!
It came out okay.
It did.
This one's actually even aesthetically, the building's a little nicer.
You know what I'm dying to see? And I went to the beginning of property plan, it's all I remember. Something gets in my mind, like that stuff. The, um, steps, go behind that stuff.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm doing it yet either.
No, no, but I, I remember you talking about it.
No, well, we are.
And I went and I said...
We're actually working there tomorrow.
I said, are we gonna carve into the wall? Are we gonna build some steps?
No, there're gonna be steps going up.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I just, I said, I said, it's unique. I want to see it.
But even that, it looks like right now the foundation's up there, but we're gonna stone the whole front. So it'll, and we're gonna go right up to the other side. It'll, it's not a lot of stone, but it's gonna give it a nice...
I guess you go to the middle.
Yeah. No, we're gonna go all the way, it'll look good.
Oh, you're gonna go all the way?
Yeah.
I'm sure Tommy will appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, well, the steps'll go all the way up into the back. Oh, yeah, well, the steps will go all the way up into the back, so, like I says, we're working there tomorrow, we just, just having a.
Yeah, I see the car there.
Yeah, let's an oil in there, not a very often.
He's got, he's got ready some new pieces in.
I gotta, I gotta make money on the other jobs too, am I, am I real John?
Okay, can you do it?
Yeah, probably go right up this way.
Yeah, right up this way.
So basically, what you're looking at is building here and building the front.
Yeah.
Driveway in the front, turn around.
And there's two here, four there.
Three here, four there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, this is about where the driveway would be, you know, for the front of it, there, I think there's thirty feet, is that what they are? David, these are yours, don't let me take them off.
Yes, thank you.
And they're on slip, right, they're not?
No, there's garages underneath.
I know, but they're, but they're ground up, right?
Yeah.
They don't go underneath.
No. They will, yeah, they're, they're. Originally, we wanted to come around the back and come in this way, but it was, well, I think it was one of the issues that SLR raised, and, I, I don't really care anymore, right?
Yeah.
So, so there's be more steps in the front, that's all, you know? But the idea is to have a garage, so every unit, so one bedroom, so, I don't know how far I can go with this, but, the way I look at it is Bethel set precedence with parking. So, pretty much they, there's no, well, you need one point two or one point five for a bedroom or whatever it is, right? So we're literally giving, I think there's, David, do you know how many parts, nine?
I believe it's ten total, ten.
Ten. So we're actually giving almost two parking spots.
Yeah, we have the garage, and then the space in front of it, and the garage, and one parking lot.
Beaver, so inside.
Oh, speaking of one.
No, you can't put two in there, but you basically have the storage, the washer and dryer, the dryer will be down there instead of, you know, instead of in the unit itself, you'll have storage, so they're pretty nice.
And the port will be black carpet or whatever.
Yeah. So we're actually, for a garage, it's oversized, but it's a garage and kind of storage and all.
Nice.
Which works out nice.
Everyone loves this pool.
I told you where I just came from, because obviously, uh, some of you might know that, I'm building a self-storage facility, Danbury.
Oh, yeah?
We're down on the road from the municipal center, almost gone. Modern self-storage.
Yeah.
Well, it's actually a great bathroom.
Good job Kitty.
Yeah, I mean, my best tip, yeah, my, my, my friend would be into a, a three-bedroom house on my street, and it's just the two of them. There's the two car garages, you come out walking. I told my kids, I said, if you don't want your stuff, throw it in the trash. Kitty, I was actually, I went to my other nieces and nephews, I said, the kids don't want mommy's china, or they, if you want it, I'm giving it away. And this is, yeah, I said, please, I'm sorry, I just wanted it out.
Very much in here down low right now.
Well, you have to do it. Oh, why you ducking and cleaning?
That's healthy. That's what I do. But with landscaping, I also do stuff. I've been doing this for thirty-nine years now. We don't hire somebody to come in and make it look video.
Alright. Alright. So this is, so this is where we started, do you guys have any other location or observational questions?
No, I'm, I'm pretty good for you.
Okay. I'm sorry? Do, do you guys have any location or observation questions?
When we had the meeting, we were talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, just before they're here.
Those bushes may stay, and if they do, I won't do anything, if the bushes go, then I'll do something, because, quite frankly, I don't even, I own the property, I'm not selling the property, I own the property. I don't wanna look at their house anymore than they wanna look at mine.
Wait.
By accident, right? So I'll do.
Where are you headed Kitty?
To whatever, like, those are the mighty that they planted.
Okay. Are you, are you leaving?
They're the wrong kind, they're not gonna do it.
Uh, hang on here.
That's, that's, yeah.
Kitty?
Kitty, one second.
Okay.
Can we bring us up here real quick to where Kitty is?
Yeah.
Six months ago, or whatever, you couldn't see those windows in here because of how overgrown it was.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, why don't we go up to where Kitty is so we can close, okay?
Are you ready, this is your car, right, I'm just gonna throw my foot seat?
Uh, yeah, I'll take them, thank you. Thank you.
Yep. Alright, any more questions before I leave? Oh, I got nothing. Oh, we had to come up. Yeah, which is probably about the top of the house. So there'll be, this'll be, this, yeah, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna do some, um, like, that's a nice maple, that's staying. Obviously, this thing, they go towards that, the road, that's going, and you can see I own right up to those prairies, right? So we're doing, we're gonna be doing ornamental trees up here, I don't know if they're gonna be bonsains or chinos. Or, well, no, no, if you, if you do Bradford, pear, Cleveland, they're the ones that fly up.
Oh, yeah, I, I need those, thank you Kitty.
So there's all different, uh, different stuff, and you're gonna keep that pine tree right there, right?
Oh, yeah, that's a definite.
Yeah, the whole idea was just a relief, the, the vine was absolutely insane, I mean, it was just.
Would somebody like to make a motion to close your, maybe? Can we have a second?
Second.
Hold on, Saber?
Hi.
Okay.
You have all the technical questions you want on, on Tuesday, pretty smart fella.